Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Knablock.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Knablock, second by Schmoki. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda's been adopted. Next, we have the approval of our minutes from our June 20th meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
I move approval of the minutes from our June 20th, 2019, meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Heikle, second by Casey. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Our first order of new business, planning case 19-14, a subdivision exception at 331-108th Avenue and 108-31 Foley Boulevard. Cap, Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Commissioners and Chair. This is, uh, first item on the agenda tonight is a subdivision exemption, commonly called a lot line adjustment. What's being proposed is the property on Foley Boulevard is gonna deed over to the property on 108th, the back corner of their property. This is Foley Boulevard here and 108th Avenue here, and the two properties are outlined in black. What is being proposed is parcel C, which is 10,160 square feet, will be deeded over to parcel A. Both parcel B and parcel A meet the dimensional and setback requirements as they are, and they will continue to meet the dimensional and setback requirements after the subdivision exemption. Generally, what happens is, um, this only requires a planning commission approval, provided the planning commission approves the subdivision exemption. Once the conditions are met, there's a, uh, a form that the city fills out that gets recorded at the county to document, um, the lot line adjustment. Um, there's a public hearing required, and, um, with that, I'll answer any questions. Staff is recommending approval of the subdivision exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, is this amenable to both parties? That I know the one petitioner brings the, the application, but it's amenable to each?
Yeah, correct, Commissioner Casey, yes.
And then compensation takes place?
It's between the two parties.
Yeah. And then the property tax adjustments done when it's recorded?
That's up to our assessor's office.
Yeah, that's the county, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, uh, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 19-14, a subdivision exception for 331-108th Avenue and 108-31 Foley Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak at the public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. And Commission. Thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
I move to approve that in case 19-14 as listed in the, in the information packet with the stated recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmoki. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if anyone chooses to do so. Uh, second case under new business, planning case 19-15, a subdivision exception, 11201 and 11225 Exion Street, JSN Properties. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, this is our, our second subdivision exemption. Um, the commission may be familiar with this property. They recently approved a warehouse, office warehouse building, um, for the site. And if you recall, uh, part of that approval was relocating an existing stormwater ditch that ran along the north side of the property, onto the property in the north. In order to accommodate, accommodate that, um, the property to the north, granted, um, the applicant drainage and utility easement over a portion of their lot. Um, since that time, um, the two parties have talked, and, um, the property owner to the north has agreed to sell the south 154 feet to JSN Properties, the owner of the office warehouse building. The area to be transferred is 96,540 square feet. Um, like the other parcel, dimensional requirements and setback requirements will still be complied with should the subdivision exemption be approved. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. And Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right, hearing done. We will have a public hearing in this matter, and at this time, I will open the public hearing in planning case 19-15, subdivision exception at 11201 and 11225 Exion Street. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Schmoki.
In planning case 19-15, I move to approve the proposed subdivision exception with the following conditions being the drainage and utility easement be recorded along the north lot line of parcel two.
Second.
Motion by Schmoki, second by Heikle. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if anyone so chooses. Third case under new business this evening, planning case 19-17, a subdivision exception, 11201, Exion Street and tract D, RLS, at JSN Properties. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, uh, Chair and Commission. Again, this was the, the office warehouse, uh, property here. As part of their approval, um, their driveway extended out along this piece to Exion Street. Uh, Exion Street is actually located on a separate parcel, tract D of RLS 179. In order to accommodate, uh, the driveway access out to the cul-de-sac, um, the city will be transferring, um, it's about 7,873 square feet of outlot D, um, to the applicant. The applicant will then deed, uh, roadway and drainage easement over that part of the area transferred, this little corner of the cul-de-sac, that's located on, um, uh, the parcel that JSN Properties will be, uh, purchasing. It's kind of sideways, it's the only way I could get it on the screen. Um, but this area here is what's being transferred to, um, JSN Properties. It's the same width as that area off of tract A that commission just re, just approved, so it ties in with that as far as the depth. And, uh, that piece of the cul-de-sac that's on parcel two is this area right here. And the city will be, um, granted a easement for that partial, that, that piece of parcel two that is encumbered by, um, Exion Street. With that, this was a condition of their site plan approval that the, um, applicant and the city work out a process by which they could get the driveway out to Exion Street. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed subdivision exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? All right, we need another public hearing, so I will open this public hearing for planning case 17, or 19-17, subdivision exception of 11201, Exion Street and tract D of RLS 179. Anyone wishing to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. And Commission.
Mr. Ch, go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Um, yeah, in planning case 19-17, um, I recommend the planning commission approve the proposed subdivision exception with the following condition. A permanent roadway easement be recorded over the north end of parcel two encumbered by Zeon Street.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, second by Knablock. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is again a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if anyone so chooses. Our fourth case under new business, planning case 19-13, consider an ordinance amendment regulating self-storage facilities. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and, uh, Commission. What staff is proposing tonight in this application, or in this, uh, item, is a amendment to the city zoning code, how it relates to self-storage facilities. The city is currently has a, uh, moratorium in place over self-storage facilities, um, that has been extended out to, I think, December of this year?
Uh, I believe it's February.
February? To allow staff in the commission and the council to, uh, consider a, an ordinance amendment addressing, um, self-storage facilities. Uh, City Council has had two, uh, work sessions with staff. The last one in April. Um, at that April meeting, council asked staff to, uh, develop the, the changes that are proposed and before the, uh, council tonight. Currently, uh, self-storage facilities are allowed in the general commercial district with a conditional use permit. Uh, no accessory outdoor storage is allowed. And they're also allowed as a permitted use in the industrial district, and outdoor storage is allowed as an accessory use, but it requires a conditional use permit. They're also allowed in the River Rapids overlay district, where properties have an underlying zoning of general commercial and industrial. However, in the River Rapids overlay, they all require a conditional use permit that are subject to the general conditional use permit standards as well as, um, specific ones that apply only to the, uh, River Rapids overlay district. Currently, there are seven, uh, facilities, uh, located in Coon Rapids. There's a U-Haul up here on Coon Rapids Boulevard. There's the self-storage facility located on Vale Street, right here. Um, there's a smaller one down off of 86th and, uh, East River Road. Uh, there's one over on University and 91st. This is the, I believe it's, uh, the public storage on Woodcrest. Um, this is the one just up the road here on Robinson. And then there's another one over on, uh, University Avenue up on 112. As you can see, they're, they're generally scattered, um, throughout the city. There wasn't a way to get nice close-up pictures and include them all, so... But this, this shows the dispersion, um, of the existing facilities, uh, around the city. Um, the recent one that was approved up on 124th and Main, and Main Street and, uh, North Hill Boulevard is, uh, right here. And, uh, the other one over on Foley Boulevard is over in this area here. The ones that, uh, this is, uh, when here is zone general commercial. Uh, this one is general commercial. The U-Haul is, uh, general commercial but is in the River Rapids overlay district. Um, the one on Vale Street is industrial, uh, but is within the River Rapids overlay district. The one down on 86th is actually in a planned unit development, and so that would not be affected by any changes being, uh, proposed as part of this amendment. And, uh, the one on Woodcrest is general commercial, as is this one over here off of, uh, 91st and University. As part of the, the background through this, and was presented to the council at the April meeting, um, staff went through and identified possible locations for future storage facilities. Um, we also compared, um, our code with, uh, other cities. And those cities included Blaine, Andover, Anoka, Brooklyn Park, and Chaplain. What I'd like to do is, part of the discussion tonight is kind of break it up into two components. Um, staff is proposing, uh, two new definitions for self-storage. One for the more traditional self-storage facility and another for a self-storage facility indoor, which would be similar to the, the two most recently approved facilities. And then get into a discussion on, um, the different zoning districts and how self-storage facilities will be treated in each of those districts. Um, first, let's go over the, uh, self-storage facility. Um, the proposed definition reads as follows. "A facility containing separate, individual, and private storage spaces of varying sizes, leased or rented on an individual basis for the storage of personal property, where individual renters control and access individual storage spaces via its own access door. Ancillary retail sales of related items such as moving supplies and facility offices may also be included. Such facilities to be used for storage only." The proposed definition for a self-storage facility indoor reads, "A fully enclosed building that is climate-controlled, containing separate, individual, and private storage spaces of varying sizes, leased or rented on an individual basis for the storage of personal property, where individual renters control and access individual storage spaces. Each unit must be directly accessed from the interior of the building via its own access door. Outdoor access to individual units is prohibited. Ancillary retail sales of related items such as moving supplies and facility offices, offices may, uh, also be included. Such facilities to be used for storage only." So they're very similar definitions. Um, the clause that really differentiates the two is, uh, must be directly accessed from the interior of the building via its own access door, and outdoor access to individual units is prohibited. Commission feedback on the proposed definitions?
Commission? Any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, Mr. Harlecker, what would be the instance if there was a structure that was built with both? Say, the classic, single-row, single-story row storage as well as a vertical structure that would be the indoor storage? So kind of a combination. How would that be classified under this example?
Um, I would say that something like that would only be allowed in the industrial district because of the outdoor access.
So that would fall to the most restrictive?
Yes.
Side of that?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Harlecker?
Okay, if we don't have any more, uh, discussions on that, um, we can get into the, uh, proposed changes. We'll start with the, uh, general commercial district. Um, as stated earlier, self-storage facilities are allowed as a conditional use and outdoor storage is not prohibit, is not allowed. Staff is proposing to amend the code to allow only indoor self-storage facilities. Um, they would require a conditional use permit, and outdoor storage would not be allowed. Facilities would be subject to the standard commercial design standards. The implications of that, um, the proposed facilities, you know, that would impact, uh, four of the facilities. This one here up on Robinson, the Woodcrest, and the two on University. Those sites are zoned general commercial. They would become legal non-conforming because they fit the definition of a self-storage facility and not the self-storage facility indoor. With, let me elaborate a little bit on, uh, non-conforming. Non-conforming uses are allowed to continue to operate. Um, they can be maintained, they can be repaired, and if destroyed, can be rebuilt in the same configuration. The big difference is they cannot be expanded, and if they cease operation for more than 12 months, um, they lose their non-conforming rights and cannot be reopened. Um, if they were to reopen, they would have to be built to the current standards, which would be a, uh, indoor storage facility.
Commission, any thoughts or concerns on that? Sounds good, continue.
Okay. Um, let's go on to the, uh, the River Rapids overlay district. Um, the proposed changes. All self-storage facilities, um, are either on the general commercial industrial district, and they, uh, do require a conditional use permit subject to, um, specific standards that are in the, uh, River Rapids overlay district. What staff is proposing to do is to amend the code to allow only indoor self-storage facilities. Uh, that would affect the U-Haul and, uh, the Coon Rapids storage on Vale Street. Make those facilities, uh, non-conforming. And, uh, one of the changes that staff is proposing is that, um, uh, staff's proposing to eliminate, uh, two of the standards that are in the River Rapids overlay district. Uh, we'll keep the bulk of them. There were, there was two specific standards that related just to, uh, outdoor storage. The first one is not feasible to install a public sidewalk to serve the facility. Um, that would be eliminated, as would the, uh, s, uh, second related, uh, condition. The facility is screened from view from Coon Rapids Boulevard. Um, staff was, uh, looked at that if you're gonna have, uh, uh, the nicer buildings. There are currently some, uh, fairly restrictive and prescriptive design standards in the River Rapids overlay district. And that would, you would treat it like, uh, any other, uh, building that went up in the River Rapids overlay district. And the two that are being elim, the two conditions that are being eliminated, staff really struggled with the first one. I think the council and commission did too. The feasible to install, uh, the public sidewalk. So staff is proposing to eliminate that. I believe there's four other, five other standards specific to the, uh, River Rapids overlay district that will remain in place. Any questions, comments on River Rapids overlay?
Commission.
Uh, Mr. Harlecker, what are the two that are affected?
Uh, U-Haul. Uh, down on Pheasant Reg. And the, uh, Coon Rapids storage on Vale Street.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
With, in regards to U-Haul, did this doesn't affect their ability to rent out U-Haul trucks and so forth from their facility?
Yes, correct, Commissioner Heikle. It would only affect their, uh, self-storage component, uh, of their business.
All right.
All right, and the final one is the industrial district. And staff is not proposing to make any changes to the, uh, uh, industrial district. It'll, they will, both will be permitted uses. Um, accessory outdoor storage will remain allowed but will require, uh, conditional use permit. And those are the changes that are being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions overall for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Chair Schwartz, I have a question for Mr. Harlecker.
Commissioner Knablock.
The only question I have is, um, in pertaining to the planning department, have we reached saturation?
Uh...
In Coon Rapids area? That's my only question. You know, based on growth projections and demand, since the neighboring communities are underserved, are we picking up the slack or is there just the demand, is it there or not? Like, what is the projection from?
Yeah.
The planning department?
Maybe I'll let Mr. Frenilia, he did, uh, economic research on this.
Uh, Mr. Chair and, and Commission. You know, that's a hard question to answer, and I know that the council struggled with that as well. Um, I think that, you know, the economic reality is that the market, to some extent, kind of dictates the demand, and we need to decide, as a community, what kind of uses we want. And, and if we want the self-storage uses, which we have a number of them already, what kinds do we find acceptable? And sort of the, the general consensus when we met with, uh, council in work sessions back in April and July is that the indoor type was, was preferred over the more traditional, um, type of, of self-storage. So, you know, that economic analysis, are we overserved? Um, that really wasn't part of the equation. Um, I will say that I did do some research, um, and some of it suggests that that market on a national level is slowing down, that there is a lot of, has been a lot of development in other markets. The Twin Cities market overall has pockets where there are a lot of self-storage facilities. We're probably one of them. There are other markets where, uh, there are fewer uses. Uh, and so I think to some extent the market will kind of determine where those uses are going to go. I will say anecdotally, I don't know that we have received any inquiries, um, in recent months from developers that are interested in new properties. So, we may have already reached that, that limit just by virtue of how many, uh, facilities we already have.
Chair Schwartz, I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Uh, the follow-up question is, uh, do we, with the developments that we have currently underway along Coon Rapids Boulevard and projections? And that kind of flows from the demand question I asked. But in regards to, um, in the next five years, will we have the capacity with the development and how, all the, uh, awesome growth and development that's projected in the city?
Commissioner Knablock, I guess I'm not, I'm not clear on the question in terms of what, how does that relate to the self-storage issue?
Yeah, let me clarify. With, uh, growth and projection within the next five years, right now, we're at saturation. We have enough services that are providing the needs. Within the next five years, are we going to be? Within the next five years, are we going to be having services that are satisfying the needs? Or will we be underserving our community? Like, will we not have enough service, storage facilities in five years, three to five years, with the groundbreaking and the growth that's occurring right now? That's, that's kind of where I'm leading with that question.
Yeah, well, so Commissioner Knabla and Planning Commission, I guess there's sort of two ways of responding to that. One, I don't know about the next five years. Will there be population growth? I'm sure there will be. There's, you know, planned development. We have three to 400 units of housing stock that are going to come online that have already been approved in the last two years that will, will come onto the market. How much self-storage those renters and tenants will need, I don't know. You know, long-term, looking out to 2040, which is what our comp plan does, our population is projected to grow to, I think we're at, what, 63, 64,000, somewhere in that range right now, up to 72,000. So if those projections, which come from the Met Council, are accurate, I mean, there will be more people, and there may be a need for more self-storage. You know, I think the way that this is crafted is that we can accommodate additional self-storage. It's just going to have to be the indoor type, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey. Very small case, move on.
Okay, so just to maybe kind of summarize, if I'm understanding all of this, the intent here is that we want to discontinue allowing, or having more facilities built in the city of Coon Rapids, correct? More storage units, right? And we're trying not to impede, though, upon the current businesses, just restricting them from being able to expand their current facilities, like any changes they make now would have to be in conforming with the, with the current definitions. Is that kind of fair to say?
Commissioner Schmokey, well, sort of. We're not outright prohibiting self-storage
Okay.
as a type of use. We are regulating or further restricting the current sort of type of outdoor storage
Okay.
or self-storage, which is that kind of model with the exterior
Yes.
garage doors. That would, if this is adopted, that would essentially become legal non-conforming uses. So those properties, as Mr. Harlecker mentioned, that are already in existence could continue to operate. They just can't expand. And they could rebuild, but if they cease to exist after 12 months, the use would have to discontinue. So really, what we're trying to do, I think, is if self-storage is going to exist in our community long-term, we're going in the direction of the indoor type as the preferred model.
Okay, so if we got a request in a month for another indoor facility as long as it conforms with that, we could approve that?
Once the code were adopted, that's correct.
Correct, correct, yes.
I should also clarify that in the industrial district
Yep.
there are no changes. So, and there are some industrial properties that we've identified where that traditional style could actually be encouraged. So really, I think as a practical matter, as a code matter, it would be the River Rapids Overlay District where we're really concerned about that, and then in our general commercial district.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to ask?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Thank you. Just two questions here. One revolving around the sidewalk requirement. I understand, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about whether sidewalks should be going to public stores or not. But I do have a question, especially in the River Rapids Overlay, where it may be part of a sidewalk or trail system already. Would the expectation that those be a continuation if it passed through the property? Or would there be, or would those be additional items that would have to be added on since it's no longer a requirement of the district?
Commissioner Geisler, that would be looked at as part of the site plan review. If there was, typically, we're looking for the extension of sidewalks and trails along Coon Rapids Boulevard. If it was identified on that parcel, it would be required as part of site plan review to, for the developer to install that section of the trail on their property or provide escrow, which is the process we currently follow.
Excellent. And then the second question I have, are the design standards of the indoor facilities being considered as well as these zoning changes?
Not at this time, but it is something that we're going to possibly look at in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I want to just add something anecdotally, totally anecdotally, but my husband and I took a road trip, couple of road trips this summer, and we went down through Indiana, Kentucky, Tennessee, West Virginia. And I can tell you that it's that indoor storage facility that is the up-and-comer, and they're going up everywhere. Near freeways, slightly outside of urban areas, you know, some are franchised, some are stand-alones, but it's that type of facility that's making headway. And you'd think people would run out of stuff to store, but I think it's those baby boomers, us baby boomers, are complicating things. So just anecdotally, that's, that's the track we saw throughout the southern part of the country, anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else, Mr. Harlecker?
No, Chair Schwartz, that's.
All right, we do need to have a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing on considering an ordinance amendment regulating self-storage facilities. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Chair Schwartz, I would like to point out that all the owners of the seven facilities in Coon Rapids were sent out public hearing notices notifying them of tonight's meeting.
Commission, thoughts, considerations?
Mr. Chair, I would say in Plan Case 19-13 that I recommend the commission approve the proposed ordinance amending the definitions and regulation relating to self-storage facilities.
I'll second it.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Knabla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All right, opposed? The motion carries. It's a recommendation by the planning commission and will be introduced by the city council at their October 1st meeting. And I'd like to commend the staff for an outstanding job working on this. Thank you, folks did a great job.
It was complicated. You did well.
All right, other business. Mr. Harlecker, you have anything?
The west building of Riverdale Station is scheduled to open up end of this month, I believe. I believe they're about 85% leased at this point. Landscaping is almost in around that part of the building. Paving is in. They're still working on the east building. I assume that'll probably open up early, early next year. The JSN office warehouse building, walls are up, so they're going to town on that. If you notice, there's some work going on over on Patterson Floral. I believe it's just some demolition work and cleanup work that's being done. The site plan for the apartment building that was approved has expired, so that's no longer a valid approval. If you notice, the sign on the Honda dealership now has its rock and limestone on it, so that's, they're finishing up that. And the retail building at Wells Fargo, the work that's going on there right now is sewer and water work, getting that realigned. They do have a building permit in. That will probably be issued shortly. They're tying up some, some loose ends with that. I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add one thing to that. You've probably seen the, all the work that's going on down at Port Riverwalk, all the grading work and earthwork.
Yes.
So that is progressing along. I don't know how much the commission is aware of how that arrangement was structured, but the city is doing that grading work in advance of closing on the site for Centra. So all the work that you see going on down there right now is being done under a city contract. Centra will reimburse the city for that and will also put in the public improvements. It's likely that a lot of that's going, or some of that's going to extend into 2020. So we're still sorting through that. There's also a final plat for the first phase of the development that needs to be approved. So Centra is working on that. We're hoping to close on the site and sell the land this fall, but that schedule is up in the air. So we're continuing to do what we can on our, on our end to push that project along.
Very good. I also see there's grading work being done on the storage facility over there at Falling 101st.
Yep. I haven't been over there, but.
Anyone else have anything for other business?
Is there any update on the Springbrook apartment complex?
Pardon?
Is there anything happening over on the Springbrook apartment complex?
Not yet, no. You know, they've got their approvals and, and they're working through their end of the project, but they have to get done in the background.
I believe they did close on the land, so they own it now. So it's just a matter of getting their approvals.
Okay.
And what's our agenda look like for next month?
Pardon?
Our agenda look like for next month?
We've got two items. One is a lot split for the ECM property down on Coon Rapids Boulevard, so that each of the building, the office building and the, not manufacturing, but the printing building, will each be on a separate lot. And then we did get a subdivision application for the Gene Rogers property. It's located behind the Gateway Drive project off of 121st. There's a 40-acre piece there that's mostly wetland and flood plain, but there's some high land up in the northern end of it, and we did get an application to extend a cul-de-sac in there off of Osage, and they're proposing four lots off of that cul-de-sac. So that'll be the other item that the planning commission will be looking at next month.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Those, those six homes that are being erected just north of Main Street and Shenandoah, there's, there's five of them up and running.
Yep.
And one
And I think the fifth one is in the inspections department.
Yeah, and I saw the foundation for the, the very last one
Yep.
was in today. All those things we approved are coming to fruition.
Do you have any idea how many houses have been sold in that Centra project?
Commissioner Heickler, none of them have been sold at this point. They haven't started to market the land. They don't own it, so they won't, they won't start a marketing effort probably until next year, once they have site control.
Is the plan to build the houses as the lot is sold, is out there?
They're, yeah, they're going to develop it in, well, they're going to sell it in phases. They like to work in, in sections or zones, so they, once they sell a certain number of lots and construct a certain number of homes, then they'll open up a subsequent phase of the development for, for sales. So they're going to start on the, I guess, the southeast corner of the site and kind of work their way west.
Anyone else have anything? Motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second? Motion by Casey, second by Knabla, call in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Needs adjourn.